Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Workshop Meeting on Monday, November 11. The New York, New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. We're roll call.
Dr. Beatty.
Here.
Ms. Cassell Dunn. Dr. Coleman. Dr. Pixley. Ms. Bruce.
Here.
Dr. Schoolman. It's Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Barnamann.
Here.
Ms. Ford.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as all.
We had one communication to the board this month, and that was questions from our CPAC group about our special education program evaluation. Actually, questions for the evaluation. At the moment, we have no minutes to approve, so we're going to move to our student representative report.
Not so much a report with the shortened weeks, but from Irving, for World's Kindness Day on November 13, Mr. Maruko will be doing an activity with all K and first grade students in lunch and recess to show their kindness towards a friend or a staff member. For the week, Irving will have Spirit Days to reiterate kindness and gratitude, and these topics will be discussed during morning meetings in the classroom as well. Secondly, in coordination with the PTO, we will have our Thanksgiving food drive to help families in our school for the Thanksgiving holiday. Gratitude is a huge part of our school theme for November. And thirdly, the Scholastic Book Fair starts November 19, and more information will be coming home regarding this.
So for Bartle, Epic and the PTO hosted Bartle's first pumpkin patch at Bartle. Every student got to pick a pumpkin to take home. World Kindness Week will be celebrated starting this Monday to the 15th with Spirit Days and activities centered around kindness, tolerance, respect, and gratitude. For the middle school, quarter one ends on Wednesday, November 13, so please remind your children to get all their missing assignments in. And the next PTSO meeting is on Wednesday, November 13 at 6:30 in the High School Media Center. Please join us if you are available.
For the high school, some sports stuff. Our football team came in second in the Gold Division with a 6-3 record. The boys soccer team headed to the playoffs, and the girls soccer team earned the GMC Gold Division Champions for the 30 years straight. Girls tennis came in second in the Central Jersey Group One Tournament, and we had a student play second in the GMC Second Singles. Girls cross country and boys cross country both had exceptional showings, making it to the last round of sectionals, and our volleyball team made us very proud. The student leadership team has met twice already, splitting into subcommittees on important issues and providing student opinions through surveys. The Make-A-Wish Walk last week run by DECA was incredibly successful, fundraising over $1,500. And lastly, before the election, the AP Government class visited Bartle to teach fifth graders about the election and the electoral process.
Thank you. I think a theme here is going to be short report. Quick meeting, hopefully. We do not have a superintendent's report tonight, but we'll be back here in two weeks and we'll have more information then. So we move to public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policy 0167 establishes and regulates the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Do we have people online? Okay. If you would like to comment, please raise your hand, your virtual hand, and introduce yourself. Anybody happening there? Okay, then we're going to move right on to board committee reports and agenda items. Curriculum and Instruction, I assume, has not met. Is somebody doing their agenda items?
I think they did not. Oh, the agenda.
No, they haven't met. They meet this week.
Right. Okay, you want to do that? Actually, it's pretty short.
We have one agenda item. Resolution to approve the two students for home instruction.
Cool. And equity and excellence.
We have nothing new to report. We'll be meeting next week.
Okay. Finance Facilities, I do have to report because we literally met right before this board meeting tonight, so excuse me if I'm a little scattered here, but we do have a lot of things going on in finance and facilities that we should, and everybody will get typed minutes after today. You didn't get them because it's just hot off the top of your head. So we met tonight to talk about, majority of our talk is about facilities. Besides that, we did get our water test results, and so we got ahead and applied for licenses that were all ready to go except for that water report. So that's for our before and after care is moving along well. In terms of facilities, we were approved, we had applied for two grants for preschool facilities to expand our preschool program. We had applied to the state. We were granted both applications. In one case, it was an interior alteration in Irving, and the other one was an addition, a classroom addition to Irving. And in both cases, in either case, we have to, we supply 60%. The state gives us 40% of the cost of the alteration or addition. So we discussed the options there, whether we were to, and each, both grants would add one additional classroom for preschool. And of course, the complication to all that is that we also have the Bartle walkway remediation that needs to be done. So the board, I'll do the Bartle walkway, and then we'll go back to the preschools. They can hear the thinking there. So the preschool, we talked last time rather, about the Bartle walkway that we need to move forward because of deterioration of that part of the building. And so the direction we're heading is to do a, to close off that area, not to rebuild it in kind, but to eliminate the walkway, the door, and the stairwell at Bartle. And we talked last time about paying for the professional fees to get the plans drawn up from DMR that we need in order to move forward with construction or prepare there. And so the professional fees for that alone is $149,500. To eliminate the walk, that whole area is about a $1,800,000 cost. We're also going to be looking to add on to that another $29,500 so that we have construction management bills into this as it's a very large project, not to be easily managed from our existing staff. So altogether there, it's a lot of money. You can go back and add up those numbers. Mr. Rosa has done, has been sharing with us an analysis of our capital reserve, which she confirmed with auditors this week. And we do have 3.1 million in capital reserves. So we could, we have the money to do the Bartle walkway project as eliminating that area, closing off that area. And we could do one of the preschool expansion grants. If we combine that together, it would leave us some money left in capital reserves for future maintenance and emergencies that come up, and we clearly know that they do come up. So the Finance and Facilities Committee, we're talking that that seems to be, to make the most sense, to move, continue to move forward with the Bartle walkway project. We have no choice, you know, it's necessary to keep maintaining the building and to accept the grant that includes the Irving interior alterations. Take that grant, turn back the other one because we don't have the 60% share to do that project. So that was the conversation at Finance Facilities, the main of our conversation. The other agenda items, the other things we talked about. So we're, we need to submit a projected pre-K enrollment for next year, so that would stay at our 90, our current 90 students. So even as we move forward with that, with that one, one additional classroom, we're not yet proposing that that's going to be filled with an additional 15 students. We also had, the other conversation we had is that we have an increasing number of preschool disabled students that are, their numbers are increasing, and we need to service and find space and services to provide additional resources for our preschool disabled. So we have to kind of see where that fits into the expansion of our current preschool. So that's all on the table at the moment. It will be on our November 25 agenda. Other things that will be on that agenda will be waterproofing technologies. We've gotten a quote to improve some of the areas around Irving in the music and art rooms where there is a water issue. And so we have an estimate from water, weatherproofing technologies for that repair. Find the rest of my notes. Unfortunately, I put them in a variety of places. Purchase of a Boda tractor that would become out of our Pritchard equipment budget. So that's not something that comes, that we pay for out of our own budget, but it's a contract we have with them. We will have coming at our next meeting, I guess, the health and safety checklists that are currently being done as part of CUSAC. All our buildings are reviewed to see what, what the needs are going forward. The other thing we talked about was our budget process. And Mr. Rosa has put out a tentative budget calendar to start the process with our administration, which will then come to the Finance and Facilities Committee, probably closer to the end of January. We talked about what was most efficient for the meetings that the Finance Facilities Committee has with special ed and tech, some of our big, our bigger budget areas. And so we talked about that process as well. And that's the budget, the meeting that we had today. And on the agenda, which will be bigger next month, so next, next time we meet, is a resolution to approve some professional services for a program for our high school environmental science classes. So for your own information, Manhattan, Manhattan defenders is a type of fish. This is related to sustainability. Is that a speaker to come into the classes? The other one is continuing an added district placement, maybe changing or something with an added district placement. The third item on the agenda is the memorandum agreement that we have with NDK Realty because we use Center School for our basketball practice during the winter. So that is a typical item, agenda item. That agenda will be longer in two weeks, but that's what I've got. Any questions on the, anything I said?
So with the preschool classroom, that's a like temporary thing we can do. Still exploring options for more classrooms down the road?
Well, it would, yeah, it would be the preschool renovation for half the cafeteria would be a permanent classroom. But right now, we are potentially having to explore it to outfit for our growing students with disabilities for preschool due to early intervention. So I'm not sure that we would have the space to even expand for the general education population if we have to continue expanding this year for that. So that might be the concern, but one of the things that we do need to continue to talk about and explore would be, you know, potentially adding the classrooms via referendum to, you know, potentially adding to Bartle to move first grade to Bartle. And then, which is why I think it's a good move to outfit the half the cafeteria to a preschool classroom now because it could continue to stay as preschool classroom without, without issue. And preschool students eat lunch in their classrooms. They don't eat in a cafeteria. So the cafeteria then would, in the future, be used for kindergarten only, which then would make that building work really nicely for that, for that population. So that's, right now, that's, that's where we're at, kind of looking at our needs in that building and maybe kind of putting a pause to the expansion in our general education population. The building has exploded. If you're around that area, pick up or drop off too, is, is a really big issue. The traffic has been a nightmare. You know, parking is crazy. So as we add on, which is great, we're adding more staff. So every preschool gets a teacher plus a couple of aides, especially if they're preschool disabled. Now we're talking about a couple more aides in there, a couple more paras. So that just adds to that, to that congestion in that area. So there's a lot of things to consider, to explore as we expand. It's not just the classroom space, but it's the congestion in that area, it's the staffing. If we have to add now, there's, the code for preschool two includes, you know, for our intervention referral services, if they're getting speech, whole group speech, individual speech, adding more, more staff in that way. They need space to do their work and things like that. So we really just have to be thoughtful in terms of our expansion. And I know that we had talked about our debt service falling off in 2030, but, you know, I would strongly advise that, that we consider having conversations potentially sooner to, to look to expand and, and build, and build out for our expansion in a, in a better situation.
I have just one question. I think you answered actually in your response to the answer question. And that is, so the reason why we are not calculating for the additional students, for the additional room is because you just don't know if we are going to actually be able to open up that additional room to the general education population.
Correct, yes, correct.
And so the idea is the additional students that we're going to be serving in our preschool disabled program are already in our system.
Or through early intervention are coming in, coming in. So it's, that is a moving target. So some of our students start as early as 11:14, so that's like in three days, some in mid-December. So it's all a calculated, because you can't open a classroom with one, one student. So right now, we're just sort of moving our students around to shuffle. So we're in compliance, and then when we get enough students, we can kind of open up another class and things like that. So right now, it's, we have some students that are in the early referral process. So we anticipate by December, January, potentially needing to open up another class, but we're monitoring it very, very, you know, very carefully. And if we do, then we're going to have to potentially have that cafeteria space that we're going to have to use for that purpose, in which case, good thing we've got some state money coming in to help us with that project, although the renovations on that project would make it a little challenging. What's nice about that as a potential renovation is that there's a door to the outside. So in terms of being able to do construction, three, essentially three of the four walls, I'll use that loosely because it's an oddly shaped space, but three of the four walls are already there. And there's a bathroom because it used to be two classroom spaces. And then at some point along the way, they made it into a cafeteria. So it would be really nice to close that off, and there's access that construction can go in and out without it sort of disrupting the whole school environment or that area. However, if we have a classroom in there, then that makes that work very challenging and pretty much only being done over the summer. The other piece that makes it even more complicated is that now that we have our license for DCF, for our aftercare program, not that it's super complicated, but it does require that DCF come back in if we are changing our spaces for our aftercare program, and they have to re-certify new spaces. And they come in with this like laser thing and literally measure the spaces in compliance. So right now, I met with Colin today to talk about where those potential spaces might be. There's very clear directives on where you can house and store your materials. So it, so things are a little bit more complicated than just, hey, we can open this classroom. We have the space. We have money. Let's go. So there's a lot of moving parts, which is why we're not going to commit to anything other than we'd strongly recommend that you accept the ROD grant for the construction in that area, but decline it for the other additional space for now, just because we have to consider the walkway. Yep.
And I'm laughing only because I'm sure that we'll be able to comply with the.
Yes, but it's.
As complicated as they are.
Right, no, and it's not, it's just annoying because now we just have to go back, bring them in here, then figure it out. So it's, there's, we just have to make sure all of our ducks are in a row as we move forward with our decision-making. That's all.
I can ask, if we do accept the ROD grant, can you hear me now? If we do accept the ROD grant for the interior alteration, that is strictly for the gen ed pre-K classroom, you would have to expand it for 15 students. That's part of, of the application and the grant application. You're committing to expand the general ed pre-K program by 15 students. Has to be done by August 31, 2026.
Okay, so then we don't have really flexibility with how, what students are being served with that additional space then.
Well, so it depends. If we have to use that space now for the special ed population, then that may throw a wrench in the timing of when we use the grant money. But it depends because next year, our special ed population for preschool might be a different target number.
Right, so that would potentially be moving around.
Right, 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 right. So I mean, we could theoretically then put a gen ed group in there, but we'd have to expand by another 15 students.
Okay, that's another whole complication, complication.
Yes, right, we can't, yes.
We can't expand, we can't do that renovation.
And use it for pre-K.
And use it for pre-S.
Right.
Right, we have to somewhere.
Right, because anything we do for.
We'll go somewhere else and then.
Right, anything that, anything that's preschool disabled, staffing, resources, space, everything has to come out of the district operating budget. So as the preschool disabled students come in and we expand and we have to add another staff member, paras, like supplies, toileting supplies, all those supplies come out of the district operating budget. And if we didn't budget for it and we have those, we legally have to educate them. We can't turn them away. We legally have to educate them, and we want to. We have to figure out then if we did not budget for it, where we have to find the money. And that's where the magic of Mr. Rosa comes in because she has to wheel and deal and figure out where we're going to find the money and then figure out how to balance the budget for next year.
So. So now I'm confused. So if we are moving forward with this interior alteration, we could expand in 2026, like, so are we, so we're committing to expanding another class, but.
But not next year. Not till it's complete.
So it gives us another year.
Correct.
So we could accept the money, do the work.
Yes.
And the class could start in September of 2026.
Yes.
Correct, because the, you know, you need permits, you need DOE approval.
So it takes time.
So construction would have to be completed by August 31, 2026.
And the class would start then, so we, yeah, okay. So we'd be committing to at least one more class at that point.
Correct.
Correct, okay, I understand.
So I'm, I'm a little confused because I thought you first said that it would open because our students with disabilities in preschool was rising, but it seems like you're saying they couldn't be in that class because the grants for.
Right, so we, because we, but we potentially might need that space. That's where it gets complicated. If we're out of space, like we have to find, we have to educate them. So right now, if I have no space in my classes, we have to use that space to educate the students. So if that's being said, then I can't use that space for construction. So we have to wait until that space is free. So let's say we start that over the summer, then now that space is unusable next year. And depending on where, now we have, our four-year-olds are going to go into kindergarten, right? So now they're aging out, they're going to kindergarten, but now I have a new group coming in. Where does that leave us with the number of gen ed students we could potentially take? Because I don't have that space as a temporary classroom essentially. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or we move on? Personnel and Communications.
Personnel and Communications did meet last week on the fourth. In attendance was Christina, myself, Marilyn, and Nikki. We discussed the personnel items and also an exciting item under Communications. We now have calendars that we can subscribe to via Google. I actually tested it out just now. I saw the links out there. It's awesome. It's a little different than I'm used to. You don't actually paste the URL. You just click on the link. And then a pop-up comes and says, do you want to add this calendar? Yes, and very, very simple. Only one question.
Helping us out. We appreciate it. One question is, I didn't see the district one out there yet, but that's probably a work in progress. But all the four schools, I tested them all. Everything looks great. Just the district one. Yeah, yep. Thank you so much. This is awesome.
And yeah, we have a very short agenda for tonight for personnel, just three items, but I think there will be more like the others in a few weeks. So we have, number one, resolution to approve appointments, just two appointments. Number two, resolution to approve the independent study program at the high school. And number three, resolution to approve a volunteer for the drama department. And that's it for personnel.
Okay. Questions for personnel? Can't imagine there are, but there are. Okay, then equity, I mean, policies and regulations, we did not meet. And I don't think we have anything on the agenda. Okay, I think we proved everything last time. So we go to our second public comment. Same thing, Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Anybody out there, Angela? Okay, if you would like to comment, please raise your hand and let us know. Okay, seeing none. Moving on, so what are we moving on to? We're moving on to President's Report, which I don't have any. I hope Allison is enjoying her vacation. She'll be back next time to do a report. Anybody have any old business they want to bring up? Or new business?
I have a question for your business. Because since this is a workshop meeting, I think I'll just bring it up.
Sure.
I think this is more towards curriculum and instruction, but I'm curious if we have any curricula that focuses on spotting information, especially on the internet and news sources and how to, like, figure out if a site is legit or not, if we have anything going forward, like in our curricula currently, or that's something that's in the pipeline. And if so, if that's something that we can start as early as possible, like as soon as they get Chromebooks, just to stop the misinformation in general. Don't know if that's.
Yeah, I mean, we have definitely, they do a lot of works, even starting as early as Bartle. Ms. McGreevy at the Media Center Specialist does that work at Bartle, just like kind of identifying fake news, credible sources, and then it scales up all the way to the high school. And I know Ms. Puccio, who oversees it, the middle and high school, encourages students and shows them, I think we subscribe to like, EBSCO host, students help me out here, EBSCO host.
Yeah, in the high school, we have like a resource that the library provides for us with a bunch of like academically peer-reviewed sources for us to use when we do like research papers and stuff like that. And so our teachers make sure that we're not using sources that we shouldn't be using, that are untrustworthy. So at least in the high school, it's stressed a lot, and there's lots of resources for us to find good sources.
Yep, and I know they scale that down to the Bartle, they have a more developmentally appropriate versions of those for, for those students, yep. Yes, yep, yep. Yep. Yeah, they should be, the media curriculum is available on the district website. So if you peruse through the media curriculum, you'll see it by grade band.
I was just going to say too, I know we're talking about AI on Thursday in that meeting, that certainly is a part of that too, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add a different new news.
Go ahead, go for it.
Well, I just wanted to take this opportunity to, I know we just had a very momentous week in elections, but we also want to acknowledge that we were re-elected, myself.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, I didn't get word yet. But I didn't get any word.
Yes, very uneventful, untested, we will take it.
There were no surprise write-ins. You never know.
So, you know, thank you, everyone in the public who did look down the ballot, look across the ballot, however you want to call it, to take the time to re-elect us, to make your voices heard. That, although again, I understand this is not the kind of election that, I don't think any of us wanted to have such a quiet, unsettled election, wanted to be out there talking to as many people as we could. But I think you know where we stand on all the issues, and we hope that you would just continue to engage with us and support our work as we will do our best to continue to serve this district. And I will say, again, I've been on this board since 2018, and I feel like going through the pandemic, going through a lot of new initiatives, now we're really entering uncharted territory, I would venture to say, and not even venture. I think I can confidently say when we're thinking about the incoming White House administration. And so I think as board members, we, as a board, as an entity, it's very important that we are very mindful of possible new legislative items that may be coming down the pike from the federal government that are, that's really going to impact the extent to which our Board of Education, our Department of Education exists as we currently know it, and how we need to be even more steadfast in advocating and resisting whatever efforts there are to make our work even harder in serving our students. So I'm going to leave that there, because I think we're going to have a lot of conversations about that, but I did want to acknowledge that that's not lost on me in all of this, especially being a board member, being a parent, being a member of this community, investing so much in the students and children here and the families. This is work that, again, we have to really think solemnly about and really critically about how crucial our role is to preserve. Um, this is work that, again, we have to really think solemnly about and really critically about how crucial our role is to preserve um, what we know and actually get more of what we know our students need, not less. So, thank you.
Thank you, Minnie, for not letting that go, that go on said. I appreciate that, I appreciate that. It was Allison, Monique, and myself, or back on board for another three, another three years come January. Um, so, uh, and everything you said is very true about what we need to focus on going forward. Any other whole new or otherwise business? Then uh, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.
Hey.